The Celine City Council Work Meeting at 6:01 PM. If those present would please say aye when their name is called. Councilmember Girvah, aye. Councilmember Seo.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Dylan.
Aye.
Councilmember Delarco. Delorco, sorry. Jim is. Yep, Jim's got, uh, Jim, you're muted on. Councilmember Camaro Sulak.
Here.
And I'll read my office staff, um, staff. City Manager Campbell.
Aye.
City Clerk Royal.
Aye.
City Engineer DPW Director Fordice.
Aye.
Waste Water Treatment, Waste Water Treatment Plant Superintendent Wogowski. Think so. Um, City Treasurer Bennett.
Aye.
Assistant City Manager Community Developer Development Director Green.
Aye.
Police Chief Hart. Parks and Rec Director Scruggs. Um, I think that takes care of that. Um, others present? At this point, I don't see any others. Again, if you want to make comments tonight, we would appreciate it if you would either email them to the, to the city clerk or to, um, provide them through chat, I believe. Um, that will help us with that. So moving forward, um, I do have one, um, addition to the, uh, discussion under budget. We are going to talk about the rec center, but I would also like to, um, talk about Celine Main Street. That'll be like the last 10 minutes, just a discussion about their request and their budget for this year. Um, moving forward, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? And if you would do that, Mr. Seo.
Yes, I will.
And Ms. Dylan, if you would second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion moves. Um, do I have a motion to excuse, uh, the mayor, um, at this point in time?
Um. Second.
Kristen.
Kristen moves it. Um, who do I have a second? Jack?
Yeah.
Jack Seo. All in favor of excusing the absence of Mayor Morrow from this work session, please say aye.
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 Moving on to public comment. Under the Open Meeting Act, any citizen may come forward and at this time and may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. As we don't have that ability to bring it in from an individual, um, are there any comments in terms of an email or any chat? City Clerk Royal.
Yes, I have one, uh, from Linda Tahrar at 104 West McKay Street. And she's left the message of Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers, you have been wrestling with the city's budget in extremely challenging times and the news isn't getting better. Last week on April 30th, the Wall Street Journal reported that the growing economic crisis triggered by the pandemic is expected to last. Oops. I'm sorry, is expected to last longer and hit harder in.
I can continue Terry if you'd like.
Okay.
And hit harder in Michigan than in most places as the state deals with the fallout of the severe coronavirus outbreak and ongoing dependence on manufacturing. The budget you are currently discussing is not a one-time hardship budget after which we will all be okay again. Difficult times will continue, especially in Michigan. The city of Celine needs to be prepared for that. The budget you are considering now will position the city for good or ill for the challenges coming in the subsequent years. The quality of the work you do now will determine whether or not the city faces those coming years on a solid footing. In order for the city to navigate the next year safely and to be positioned to meet the challenges that will continue beyond 2021, council needs to identify clearly what its core, that is, what is its core, that is, what must be safeguarded, preserved, and even strengthened where such is needed. Then there was one other comment, I believe, it says, I suggest that this is not accomplished, Linda Tahrar. I suggest this is not accomplished by nitpicking the budget line by line, but by undertaking and clearly identifying the city's core priorities. As one of your constituents, I support such a responsible and forward-thinking approach. I applaud the work you've already done to that end and urge you to continue in that matter. I believe that's it. Correct, Terry?
That is correct.
So with that, we're going to move into the budget review discussion. Tonight, we're going to first focus on the rec center, which will do like we've done the five-minute questions and so forth. And then, once we're done wrapping that up, we'll move on to other questions related to the other budget, budget issues. And then at the last, we'll talk about the Celine Main Street, um, budget and request. At this point, I'd move it on to Mickey Joe or Carla, whoever wants to take a lead unless, um, City Manager Campbell has something to say.
I think we just go ahead and get started with Carla in the essence of time.
Okay. Please go ahead, Carla.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I'll try to be, uh, very brief with a few comments before we, uh, take questions. Um, so, uh, as of March 13th, uh, 10 o'clock PM, the rec center closed. Um, at that time, we had no idea what was really going on, just like things have been so fluid and changing and whatnot. But, um, that first week that, uh, that we were shut down, um, our full-time staff and we had six part-time staff still reporting to the rec center. Uh, we were able to accomplish quite a bit during that time. Uh, we were able to, uh, paint our front desk area, inner lobby, uh, got a bunch of holes drilled to run cat six, uh, cable for our surveillance cameras. Um, we detailed clean, disinfect all of the facilities, all the fitness equipment, machines, hand weights, et cetera. Uh, we were able to do some other additional, uh, painting projects. Um, two of our part-time staff worked primarily outside, uh, trimming all the bushes, removing the weeds, mulching all around the pavilion, or all around the building and also all around the, uh, rotary pavilion. Then, uh, the rules changed. Uh, March 20th, we were able to, um, all of the full-time staff gathered all their gear in, uh, in order to work remotely, which we have been, uh, in, in the, until present, until today. Um, but we have, uh, been alternating weeks with our, uh, building maintenance and full-time, and our facility manager, getting into the building seven days a week to check all the pumps and, uh, motors, plumbing, HVAC, uh, exercising sinks, toilets, um, drinking fountains, checking all the pool chemicals and, and whatnot. And, uh, also while they're there, doing some interior, uh, projects as well, so really taking advantage of that time. Um, we've been extremely busy working remotely, um, taking opportunities to update our training manuals, our onboarding documents, our rules and policies, communicating with all of our part-time employees. Um, and then I believe it was, uh, uh, March 30th or April 1st, we had to lay off all but two of our part-time employees, so 52 in total. Uh, we've, we've laid off, um, with the intention of bringing, bringing them back once we reopen. Um, but basically keeping up with all of the COVID policies, uh, making sure all of our community members and, and, uh, uh, know, are up to date with all the part policies. Um, our marketing part-time person is, her main focus has been to keep our community and members engaged and informed. Um, I think she's done a tremendous job of that. Uh, we have tripled our online presence, um, since early March until, until now. Um, we've developed, uh, several online virtual classes, um, in fitness and in, uh, continuing education like art and, uh, jujitsu and some, uh, babysitting courses and things like that through the American Red Cross. Um, we've had to do a lot of cancellations of our spring events, spring programs, classes, et cetera. Um, so.
Woo!
Sorry, my, my dog is not happy right now. Um, but starting May 1st, the new executive order 2020-69 was issued, which in brief states that, um, until May 28th at 11:59 PM, that the following, uh, public accommodations are closed, so gymnasiums, fitness centers, rec centers, and the like. Um, so with that information, um, we took to our, uh, amending our current fiscal year budget. And, um, I got a lot of input from my staff regarding all of our programs and classes. And we projected basically the worst-case scenario of operating with just one month left in our fiscal year. Um, we, we had to slash our revenues with realistic expectations or worst-case scenario expectations, um, of memberships, not, not taking in new memberships, but basically renewing of our current members, not having drop-ins, uh, no building rentals, park rentals, uh, racket ball court rentals, et cetera. Um, we took a realistic, uh, look at all of our, uh, classes, the classes that we had to cancel, what we could, could project, uh, for the, for the end of this fiscal year, uh, again with our programs as well, and what our camp might look like in a worst-case scenario. Um, our expenditures, we cut those as well. Um, we did have, uh, quite a bit of, uh, of, of areas that we could cut with full-time or with part-time staff and independent contractors with our fitness classes to a tune of about $70,000. Um, and then reducing any expenditures that we would incur for our classes and programs, uh, that would be occurring during this, uh, six to eight week, uh, time period. Uh, we also took a look and backed out capital improvement projects, uh, such as the interior painting, which, um, as I mentioned before, we're actually completing quite a bit of that right now at a much lower cost because we do have the time and we have the personnel that can do that. Um, we will, in the future, need to, uh, have a contractor come in to actually do spraying, um, from the rafters up on the second floor and of those really high, um, stairwells. That's something that my staff can't do. So we will have a cost savings in that capital project that won't nearly cost $23,000. Um, we've also had to back out an $8,000 Dectron accumulator, which, um, actually it's not a bad thing because that potentially could be covered by Campbell Inc. with their new, uh, GPM program. And then, um, previously we had already backed out the, uh, the Marsite and the pool decking. Um, I guess, just in a nutshell, um, we've reduced our, our revenue by $360,000 and we reduced our expenditures by $289,000, uh, project, going forward until the end of June, um, which leaves a $70,000 gap, which, um, would come out of our fund balance. Um, and then going forward, that would leave, uh, $445,000 in our fund balance moving into next fiscal year. Um, prior to the COVID, we were, um, we had a lot of, uh, plans. We were in a, in really good shape, um, uh, having a, a very positive end of our fiscal year, um, with memberships and our classes and programs. Um, we were actually, uh, uh, in the next, um, several months over the, over the summertime, we were going to, um, uh, kind of continue that conversation from the visioning sessions that we had, um, going, kind of moving forward, uh, looking towards the future of the rec center. Um, I'm not sure who, how viable that is, but I, I do believe that is still a viable conversation to have. Um, as I mentioned, we, uh, created lots of, uh, or not lots, but some virtual classes and we're actually kind of rethinking how we're having to move forward. Um, we're, I have a valid, very talented, uh, and adept staff. They're very, uh, good at adapting, uh, to all the different situations. Um, we've learned, um, a lot of new resources. Um, we're learning from each other, from other, uh, departments, from other states, and, and really, uh, kind of reimagining how we can provide recreational services to our community. Um, our operational plan, um, for reopening should be finalized this week. Uh, we have a very good group, a roundtable of, uh, uh, area, or Wasnaught County and, um, Oakland County facilities that are involved in this. Everyone is sharing their information, best practices, um, ideas, resources, et cetera. And, um, you know, our, our, our goal is to provide, um, a very safe, uh, facility for our staff and also for our community. Um, moving into the next fiscal year, uh, there will have to be some changes made. Um, sorry, really sorry. Hold on. Um, regarding, uh, um, our, our member numbers, I, I, I really don't know. I don't have a crystal ball to know, um, what impact we're going to have. We know there's going to be some, uh, impact, how severe or how limited, I, I don't know. Um, I think that's something, you know, moving forward, we're going to have to really keep an eye on. Um, I think Joanne and Mickey do a good job of, of, uh, uh, helping me keep track of the, the budget and where we're going, where we've been, um, how we're looking for, for the future, so. Um, with that, I would, uh, welcome questions. I'm sorry, that went really fast and I, I really apologize for my dog. I, I won't stop. So, anyway. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you, Carla. Um, just a real quick, um, highlight summary. You mentioned that you anticipated a $70,000 loss for this fiscal year.
Correct.
Based upon our assumptions of what we are right now underneath the COVID, um, issues.
Correct.
Wanted to clarify that for everyone. Um, so moving on, um, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and do our little five-minute question thing and we'll start with, um, Kevin. I'm looking at the way they're showing up on my screen. Kevin, let's start with you. Um, go, please go ahead and ask, um, Ms. Scruggs any questions that you have.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much for, uh, knocking that out so quickly. Uh, so can you remind me how many full-time employees you have? And I think you said that, uh, there's no changes with the full-time staff?
Uh, there's five, or six full-time employees, including myself. So it's myself, I have a building managed, a facility manager, building maintenance, uh, recreation secretary, and aquatics director, and a recreation supervisor.
Okay.
And then part-time staff, there's, uh, right now, a- as of March, when we, when we shut down, we had about 52 on active.
Okay. But you don't anticipate any changes with the, with your full-time longstanding employ, employees, correct?
Um, what, what do you mean by that?
Well, as far as no cuts to your full-time staff?
Uh, no, I, that's, I don't expect any.
Okay, good, good. I'm glad to hear that. Um, are there, did you account for the COVID cleaning expenses? And, I mean, I'm, I, I'm thinking, and, and Linda said it very well, that this, we're not going to be okay in a, in a couple few, six months, whatever. We may need to keep a higher level of, of, you know, sanitizing, uh, heavily trafficked areas at the very least. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that that will be accounted, accounted for, because I think it's inevitable. And I, and I know all these budgets are, are, are living, you know, breathing, changing, but, um, just so that there's no surprises, um, it, to make sure that we're, that we're accounting for that.
And actually, we, we, uh, have invested in a, um, electrostatic sprayer that we will have on site so that we can, uh, we can spray and disinfect areas, um, in the middle of the day if we want to. It's a 10-minute, 10 to 15-minute turnover, so we can alternate, uh, areas where we're, um, spraying it electrostatically. Um, the disinfectant is something that stays on the equipment and will keep it sanitized. Um, we have invested in additional hand sanitizer, um, gym wipes, which are disinfectant wipes that we currently use anyway. But we anticipate a, a lot larger volume of being, of those being used, so we have accommodated for that.
Okay, very good. Um, and then as far as you said that your, your fund balance is 445,000, uh, just to give me some perspective, what is the, is there a, a certain percentage, um, of your budget that, uh, you try to stay, uh, within? Like, I don't, I don't know what it is for the, is it the same for the rec center as it is for the city of trying to have a?
I think, uh, we had addressed this at one of the other sessions. We don't have a, or the city doesn't have a policy in place, but we have been, uh, trying to keep with the same, uh, same policy as the city has, which we're far, we far exceed, um, that percentage.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Plus right now.
Okay. And, and I'm glad that you're, um, sharing and coordinating, uh, with other rec centers and other, in other areas, um, that, that must help with the perspective of, of where your facility stands. Um, so it's, sounds like you have things well accounted for. Um, so I can't, and without seeing numbers in front of me, and I do definitely do not want to be nitpicking at all. I have the utmost confidence in you, so that sums up for my questions. And thank you for such a, 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 a quick and thorough, uh, report.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Camaro Sulak. Um, Ms. Dylan, would you please, uh, question next?
Thank you. Thank you, Carla, for your report. Um, I guess I don't have those numbers in front of me, so I'm having a hard time kind of looking at my notes, trying to figure it out. Do you have a new budget right now going forward? Do you have a new 21 budget? Like, have you amended your budget since what we've seen? Or is your budget still where it's at?
Uh, I, what, the amendments that I was talking about was for the 2019-20 budget, which will affect our next fiscal year budget as well. Um, there are additional, uh, projected amendments that should be made or can be made, but realistically, until we can get back and kind of see how things are going and how things are moving, I, I, I don't, I can't really make an educated guess at this point.
Okay. So I, I guess then my question was going to be, um, you know, are you going to utilize, you know, worst-case scenario numbers for your 21 budget going forward? Um, are you, I, I guess, what is sort of the, the industry standard right now? What are other municipalities and, uh, rec centers doing?
Actually, right now, everyone is really focused on this fiscal year, trying to, um, figure out where we're ending up. Um, I had a conversation today with, uh, uh, Gross Point. Um, their fiscal year ends at the end of July, unlike ours, which is the end of June. And, I mean, everyone is really focused on trying to figure out where we're ending up right now so that we can move forward into the next fiscal year and make, you know, make whatever accommodations there are at that point.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. Um, I, I did hear you, one of the first things you did say is that you were utilizing some of this time to update your training manuals and bravo for you for doing that. Um, I know that's something that this council's been discussing, um, there's a need for it, um, in other departments, so I really do appreciate that you're, you're making that a priority at this time. Um, I do have a couple of questions for you. Um, first one, it might be actually for Mr. Campbell. Is there any liability issues with rec center staff doing projects like painting or anything? Are there, are those union jobs? Are there liability issues that they fall without, with, beyond the scope of their job duties?
Uh, no, no. As a matter of fact, uh, one of the, one of the two individuals is, uh, is a union member, so, no, I, I.
Awesome. Fantastic, thank you. Um, so Carla, going back, your, your rec membership numbers right now, um, I assume all of you just paused all of your memberships like we did when we had the roof project, where everybody's just sort of holding and you tack it on to the end?
Yes, so a, a couple of different scenarios. One is, um, for our annual prepaid members, we, everyone is on pause right now, for, number one. Number two, the prepaid members, we will extend their member, their membership based on how long we were closed. Excuse me. And then our corporate members, um, we keep their same expiration date, but then we reduce, like, we figure how much money that's worth and then we, uh, deduct that from their renewal rate. Um, our corporate members are just, they, we'd like to keep that same date year after year after year, just that, that's when they want it, they chose what date they want to sign up. So it, it's worked out before when we've had other, when we did our renovation, when we had our pool down and so on and so forth. Um, we can't activate anyone until we get back or know a, a certain date that we're going to be reopening.
Okay. Um, and so then are you looking at a large drop-off based on those corporate memberships? Not drop-off of money, dollars? Because you're, you're sort of doing a give-back when you re, when you renew?
There, there will be some, it, it's not going to be significant with the corporate members. Um, things will be, we'll, we'll take a year or, I would say a year, I, and don't quote me on that, but to, to get back into our flow. Um, you know, in the past, since 2013, we've really been gaining, uh, membership strength and, uh, and revenue numbers. And this is going to give us a slight setback, but it's, we're going to recover. Um, I think it's proven that this, the facility and the amenities and the, the programming that we have is valuable to this community. And there, we'll, we'll continue on once we get through all this.
Okay. Um, I guess I've got a couple more quick questions.
Um, if we could, if we could have a second round, um, you know, your five minutes have gone.
Okay, thank you.
Um, moving on to Ms. Mitchell, would you please, um, ask, ask your questions?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, Carla, thank you so much for, uh, that really concise rundown that you gave. I think it's one of your best, tightest presentations ever. Um, and so I too would appreciate some numbers to look at, and I'm, I'm actually going to ask you to repeat. I was, I was taking notes, but I couldn't hear properly. Um, you reduced your revenue by how much?
Uh, our revenue, uh.
You said it right in the beginning.
Yeah, $360,000.
Okay.
We cut out of our, our current revenue.
And the expenses you cut out?
$289,909, so 290,000.
Okay. Um, thank you, that's going to help me. And then you said there are some other changes? I mean, I don't need them delineated. Are there other changes?
Well, the, the changes that I was highlighting was basically everything, um, part of that 360,000 and 289,000.
Aye, okay.
We had to, you know, we, we backed out all of the, um, part-time employee wages and independent contractor wages that we haven't been paying. We backed out that out of our expenses and, uh, you know, looking at, potentially we have less people in, in programs, we've adjusted those budgets to accommodate for that.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it. Yeah, if you can, um, throw that budget at us when you can, um, that will help me just understand a bit more. I really applaud what you're doing as far as your forecasting. Um, we don't like to think about the worst-case scenario, but, you know, kind of plan for the worst and hope for the best. Um, I really appreciate that. Um, so I, I too had a question when you talked about staff painting. Um, so I've been attending Donna Lizinski's town halls, and one of the things she said is that anything emergent can be done, but you can't start new pro, new projects. So I guess, I, I didn't know that, um, there was work going on in the rec center. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Um, well, that first week that, that, uh, we were shut down, uh, we, we were allowed to have staff in the facilities.
Oh, okay, so I must have the timeline incorrect. Okay, so that painting was going on when we kind of didn't know what was happening?
Correct. And then I have, um, a full-time employee that's on seven days. They, they, they rotate back and forth just so that, you know, we're not spreading disease or germs or whatnot. Um, but as they're in the building, they're completing some of those projects as well to put in their full eight-hour day.
Okay, all right. Um, what, what can you tell us about summer camps? Are those canceled?
Are those canceled at this point? If everything was suddenly turned around, would they still be run? Or are you saying, you know what, no summer camps for now?
No, we're planning on having summer camp. It's a, in my opinion, is, it is an essential service that we offer. We have a lot of essential workers that rely on our, on our camps for, for their kids to, to attend. We've had quite a bit of feedback from the parents needing or wanting us to have this, wanting it to run. They need this service, so we're planning on it. We have all of our staff ready and, and, uh, ready to start training with them and getting them going on time, which is first part.
Okay. Um, I was just curious, and yeah, I know that parents are desperate to have help like yours, um, and I'm hoping that something will happen, and we can, we can accommodate them and help these parents out. I think, you know, working full-time and providing full-time childcare is, I don't, I don't envy anybody doing it. I think those are my only questions for now, and I'll, any leftover time, someone else is welcome to take.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon, Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Delarco, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Carla, I just want to make sure I understand the, the 360K number you put out there, that's assuming a loss of that much revenue, right? You're assuming you're going to lose that much revenue through what we've experienced with the COVID-19?
Yes. That's, that's our worst-case scenario. That's assuming that we're not going to take any, in any additional, like, daily fees. We're not going to be taking in any money for, uh, building rentals, for park rentals. There's certain programs that we, we can't run because they're either already over with or just, you know, not, we just don't think that that's something that we're going to run. So we really took line by line, all of, all of our programs, all of our classes, and said, what, what do you think? What's our worst case? What, what happens if, if this doesn't happen? We did take into account things that we think are going to happen. We, you know, we will be, you know, at least the plan is right now, we're going to have, like, summer softball leagues, but they're going to start later, which means we will still take money in this fiscal year for something that will start potentially late June and July. Um, you know, our sand volleyball leagues, we'll still be able to run those until we're told otherwise. Uh, you know, everything that we're doing, we're creating, uh, safe precautionary, you know, social distancing, you know, trying to come up with, there may be some additional rule changes to help, to help keep people a little bit more safe.
And, and that also accounts for having to suspend memberships and tack them on at the end for however many months there, they've been discontinued, right?
Yes, for this fiscal year. We will need to take a look at next fiscal year as we get going and see what, what, you know, how things shake out.
So the $70,000 loss for this fiscal year is the difference between the 360 and the 289 expenditures. So you mentioned the expenditure reduction was accounted for about 70K in independent contractors. I'm just trying to get a sense of where the rest of it came from, or the bulk of that expenditure list.
Certainly. Um, yeah, about 70,000 was from the part-time employees. There was an additional 11,000 from independent contractors, meaning our, like, our tennis instructor, fitness instructors.
Okay.
And then each, each area, like, we took a look at, we have a line item for our kids' camp. Uh, we, we, this fiscal year, we, we're not taking any field trips, so we backed out all of those expenditures. We are done with quite a few of our programs, like our basketball league. We had one more week left, but we've already had all of our expenditures. So we really took a look at what is our end, ending point for all of those lines. And we've cut, there's some training that we still had onboard, but we cut that out. I had to leave in a little bit, my, my building maintenance guy had, is due for renewal of his certified pool operator, and that was supposed to happen this spring, but it will happen in June. So I did leave some money in for that. But we really took a realistic, a, a look at every single expenditure and cut down to bare bones.
Did that involve any reduction in equipment upgrades or purchases? Things you had planned to phase out older equipment and bring in newer equipment?
Regarding fitness and things, no. We actually, we had the opportunity to purchase quite a bit of fitness equipment from one of the, the local boutique gyms, and that happened before COVID hit.
Oh, okay.
And in the meantime, we did, we had a, a return of a, a piece of equipment that just didn't work out for us. It kept breaking. It was a brand-new piece. So we returned that, and we ended up getting a replacement that was less. So we actually reduced our costs somewhat.
So I, I'm actually quite pleased by the fact that you, you forecasted with your worst-case scenario, and that we're only looking at how to make up a gap of $70,000. I, I think that puts you in pretty good shape, knowing that you have a $445,000 fund balance. So do you feel comfortable that you'll be able to absorb the $70,000 with the fund balance? Or would you prefer that we make additional cuts to some other project or park endeavor that would help us make up the 70,000 deficit?
Um, in my personal opinion, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased at how those numbers came out. Losing, having that gap of $70,000, we're pretty fortunate compared to what I'm hearing from some of my colleagues in other facilities.
I would agree. Yeah.
And, you know, the reason that we do have a fund balance is because we've worked hard to increase our revenues, we've worked hard to keep our expenditures low, and I think this is one of those times where using that fund balance is, is wise.
Okay.
We've worked hard to, to get that built up, so.
Okay.
So I was just going to say, if we could move on to Mr. Seal now at this point?
Sure.
Jack?
Okay, there, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Carla. I just ditto what all my other colleagues have said about being pleased with the kind of report you've given and, and where you project this ending up as a result of what's happened with this COVID-19. But I do have a couple of questions. When was the painting of the deck and painting of the pool originally scheduled for before all of this other stuff arose?
Actually, this was just interior painting, so like, the main hallways, the gym, and the upstairs hallways. The pool or aquatic center was already painted two, two years ago.
I mean, the, the pool itself and the deck itself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the, the, that was scheduled for this fiscal year, but before COVID happened, we had already backed that out. We still have not found a, a, a good decking material, and our mar site vendors are not able to complete that before July 1.
Okay. So that's going to happen next year sometime, we think, during the fiscal year, hopefully?
That's, that's another good question. You know, that requires a six-to-eight week shutdown of the pool area.
Right.
And doing something like that after being shut down for this long, it, it's going to be a tough sell.
Well, that brings up my next question, then. Would it be better to do it right on the tail end of this shutdown while people are used to not being there? Or do you intend to reopen as quickly as possible and to get people back in using the facility, and then shutting down again later?
So we did look, we were hoping, and, and Ms. Dillon had, had mentioned this, maybe we could get our contractors in to remar site while we're closed. We contacted all of them, and none of them are able to work until May 7. And then all of them are mid-project right now, so they have to get back to their projects they were working on. And then it's summer season, so they have to get all of those outdoor pools ready at this time. So it's just, it's bad timing for us.
I see. All right. That pretty well takes care of that, that questioning that I had. And I think that's all I have for the moment. So thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seal. Um, Carla, only a few, maybe touch points. When we're looking into next year's fiscal bu, fiscal year budget, knowing that, you know, they're potentially saying that we could have up and downs, especially in the fall or whatever, um, when you mentioned that you were looking at worst-case scenarios and working with your other rec centers and so forth, how are they trying to predict that type of outcome?
It, it's, it's kind of a guessing game. I mean, really, no one, we don't know how to predict it. We really don't. Um, you know, I, I would hope, I, you know, we're trying, I think people are chomping at the bit to get back in. But I know that there are some people that are, are pretty cautious and, and will probably stay away for a while. Um, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know how it's going to play out.
Are you making any recommendations in terms of what type of, of sports and so forth, like, contact sports or anything like that, to continue to hold off on or not?
Really, there hasn't been a lot of talk about that. I mean, the one thing that we were concerned with is basketball, which the season is over right now. I mean, typically, at this time of year, no one's coming in to play basketball. Our leagues are over with. And then, but the other one is racquetball. We, it's our feeling that we should not have racquetball league or, or play right now, just because they're in such a tight space, you can't stay within six feet of each other. So that, that definitely would be something that we wouldn't be offering immediately, that we would have to roll that back in, in a, in a next phase or two.
And one last question. Moving forward into 2021, um, I do know that you will have to probably identify significant support for PPE equipment and so forth. That, I want to make sure that that's something that you do identify as probably a separate line item, something that I don't know how we can, you can reopen without having that significantly in that. I do appreciate everything you've worked so forth on, looking at what you're doing in terms of the revenue and so forth. And if we can stick to a $70,000 drop for this fiscal year, that's great. It really is next year of what kind of expectations and so forth. So appreciate all your help. Um, now to move around again, if, if there's other questions. Ms. Dillon, you had a couple. Would you like to proceed with those?
Yes, please. Just very quickly, um, Carla, I guess I would like to know, first, have you considered doing a survey of your members to sort of assess their comfort level with coming back? I know, like, Celine Mainstreet has just done one to sort of see where people are positioned as to re-engagement and what they're sort of thinking as timeframe?
Yeah, actually, we just did one for our kids' camp program. You know, that's, that's one of our, our big revenue getters between now and the end of the fiscal year. So we felt comfortable going to our, our kids' camp families and asking, it was, it was about a 10, 10-point question, uh, survey. And, and just gauging, you know, their, their feelings on, you know, would you be coming back? Um, you know, what concerns might you have? And a lot of those things came back with, you know, we've been addressing all of their issues already, which is good. We didn't share with them what our plan was, but it was good to hear that they're thinking the same thing we are. My staff and I talked about, you know, should we do one for our membership? And, you know, and this was a few weeks ago, and at that time, there were so many unknowns on, will, will we still be sheltered in place? Is there going to be an extension? We just didn't feel like that, the timing was right. I think that if we put out a survey like that, we'll, we will get a lot of opinions. Um, you know, and, and, and I don't know what to do with those, other than, you know, we're the professionals here, we're, you know, we're the city, we, we have a lot more resources. And I think making those decisions on our own are, I think we can, we can make a lot of those. Not opposed to doing a survey, but, but knowing that we're going to get a lot of differing opinions.
Right. I guess I would just, what I don't want to see is you open the doors, thinking that people are going to flood in, and people are doing the wait-and-see, like, you go first, and let's see what happens to you mentality. And where you're just sitting there, you and your staff are just sitting there, kind of twiddling your thumbs, waiting by the door for people to show up.
Yeah. We, we have had, like I mentioned, we're pretty active on social media. We've had a lot of people participating in our programs, the comments, anxious to come back, can't wait. So I, I don't think it's going to be, uh, you know, crickets or anything, once, once we reopen the doors. There's a lot of people anxious for the pool to open, they, they can't wait to get back.
Okay. So that's completely, being to my next question really quickly, because I know, I don't want to monopolize all the time, is what right now is sort of going to be the protocol? Have you heard anything coming out about pools?
Um, so Stephanie, my aquatics director, has been attending a lot of the, the webinars put on through the county, the state, through our M-Parks professional organization. There's not a lot of information or direction yet. Um, I think it's still, you know, COVID is not known to be in chlorine, or it can survive through chlorine, as far as what we've been told so far. I think the, the, in our facility roundtables, what we've been talking about is trying to make sure that there's distance between people in the lanes, which there are already. There's at least six feet in between each of the lanes, limiting how many people are in the lanes at one time. I'm, I'm not a huge fan of it right now, but one of the thought processes is to have a reservation system for the lanes, like, have, you know, every hour on the hour, or every half hour, you could reserve a lane to make sure that you can get in and, and swim, and so on and so forth. So really, there hasn't been a lot of information from our state organization, or from the state MDEQ or our Washtenaw County Health Department yet.
Okay. And then my last question really quickly is, um, so when you do reopen, what is the expectation of disinfecting? Are the users going to disinfect their own equipment? Do you have your staff that's going to be doing that? Is it a combination?
The, the thought process right now is it would be a combination. Uh, you know, we have always required or asked our, our customers to wipe down their equipment after their use, just to get their germs off the, of the equipment. Early in March, late February, we started asking people to wipe down the equipment before and after. That's, that was at the very beginning of the whole COVID crisis here. We'll probably continue, or we will continue that, that same expectation, that you wipe down your equipment before and after. And then a combination of us going in and using the electrostatic sprayer. I'm, I'm not sure the, the timeframe on that, but, you know, every few hours or whatnot.
Okay. So are you looking at that sort of doubling your wipes budget?
Yeah.
Like, if you're going to, and so you're factoring that in right now?
Yes.
Offenses? Okay. Thank you very much.
And also hand sanitizer and face mask and gloves. We're, we're kind of bumping that whole, what we normally purchase, more than double that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Dillon, thank you. Well, if we could have one more question, I'd like to move on to our Mainstreet thing. Kevin, I saw you raise your hand, so please, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Protem. Carla, considering that memberships are approximately 40% of your budget, and then it goes down from classes and rec leagues and so forth, um, did you say how much of the revenue reduction came from the memberships?
Yep. Give me a second here. Um, it was, let me see. Let me see. Sorry, I can't do math in my head.
No, it's okay. It's hyper.
I, I've got it here. It's about $173,000.
Okay. So that is...
About a third of that.
The lion's share. All right. So your fund balance is approximately 20% of your $2.3 million 1920 budget. Um, all right. I'm just trying to have the right perspective of all the moving parts. All right, I'm just trying to have the right perspective of all the moving parts, and it looks reasonable from a worst-case scenario. Can't help but wonder, I mean, we don't know what we don't know yet, but if it's worse, I'm glad you have a strong fund balance. And I'll leave it at that for time's sake, and thank you again for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Camaro. Yeah, I think we'll be having some additional information come with the revised budget, which Carla will provide with us, and Mickey Joe will get a chance to look at it, so we'll have a more complex and compiled document fairly soon. Moving on to Celine Main Street, Mr. Campo, will you please update us on that?
Thank you, Mr. Gearback. And also Jill Dern, President of Celine Main Street, is also on the meeting. So we met, staff met with Main Street, I think, back in February. They proposed a budget, and we put their original budget request in for initially initializing draft one, but as we moved forward with the gap that Mickey Joe had talked about early on, that was reduced to the current, the current level for the last three years, which is $30,000 from the general fund operating, then additional $5,000 from the Tifa budget for the Hanging Basket Project. So that's what is in the current budget as proposed. Some recent communications with Jill, looking, asking about how many-year commitment. So some council members will remember, they were here during the first five years, when Main Street was conceptualized and put in and implemented, the city council did a five-year commitment, and it was reduced down each year, but it was based on that amount of money. And then this, at the end of that five-year period, then the city council did a three-year commitment at the $30,000 plus the $5,000 Tifa dollars. And so the question that she had asked me was, is the council be interested in, you know, doing a multi-year or just a single year? And they would be happy to do that, and certainly Jill can speak to that if she'd like. And then, because we also, the other note is that we always do an annual agreement with them. But just in the past, the city, the council has made a commitment for multi-years. So, you know, I certainly, based on the struggles we're having, and we know we're going to have as a result of the pandemic financially, that, you know, certainly, I mean, again, Celine Main Street is a critical part of our community in helping the city move to downtown. We certainly want to continue that. It may be wise to do a one-year commitment, and then it comes back around next year. But those are the thoughts. Jill, I don't know if it's okay, Mr. Gearback, if Jill has...
Yes, please, Jill, if you have any statements?
Sure. I didn't have anything prepared, but can everybody hear me? I think it went off. What we were thinking is, when we originally met with Mickey Joe and Todd earlier in February, we did ask for more than the $35,000 that we've had the last three years. With the 109 coming to be a bigger part of the downtown, Holly's time has been, not just because of 109, but because of everything she's doing, we were hoping to be able to hire a part-time assistant for her to do some of the day-to-day steps, so she's more open. So we did ask for more than the 35, but we're totally on board with the 35 based on the situation we're in now. So what we thought is that possibly if we did a one-year contract at the 35, then we can see how everybody's budgets look like next year, and then maybe do a multi-year next year. If you prefer to go three years, we can go three years, and we'll just figure it out as we go. So that was the only thought behind the one-year versus three-year, whatever's better for the city. But then also, you know, if this financial situation next year is better than projected, and we might be able to negotiate something higher next year for the next three years, we're open to that, too. So we just want everybody to know we're open to whatever's best for everybody.
Thank you, Jill. And I think that's kind of what we would probably anticipate. What I could do is real quick around the table and find out what your thoughts are, but I would like to say probably just a one-year commitment at this time, and if we would say yes or no, I think that would be helpful. Ms. Dillon, if you would?
Yeah, I think doing a one-year right now, because we have so many uncertainties. I do appreciate that it's easier to budget for both the city and for Main Street, multi-year, it's easier to plan. But with not knowing what we've got going on and where we're at in our budget, I think a one-year, I would feel much more comfortable with at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Mr. Camaro Sulaq?
I would agree with the one-year being the best way to go. I am concerned with the value that Main Street brings, especially with all the events that are at the 109 exchange. And Mr. Campo said it correctly of how critical they are to our businesses, employees in the downtown. Holly has done a fantastic job with the fundraising, the PPE, and the loans and grants through the state. She's been putting in countless hours, and I think that is really invaluable to our businesses, and tipped employees, trying to help everybody out. So I'm concerned that she doesn't get burnt out.
That's my concern.
And I know there's a lot of volunteers. Jill might be getting burnt out, too, but I don't want to undervalue how much they do for our community for so little, and I don't know how much the major fundraiser, being Oktoberfest, will be impacted. I mean, it's not till the middle end of September.
Right.
You know, and that would have a significant impact on Celine Main Street moving forward. So, I mean, that's where, I don't know what the percentage is, but I just want to emphasize, you know, it, you know, a little bit may help.
Thank you, Kevin. Ms. Mitchell?
Does she know she's muted? Yeah, I did not know I was muted. Yes, I absolutely support Main Street, happy to do the one-year, and would like to see some documentation, last year's budget, this year's proposed.
Thank you.
I had them ready. I just wasn't sure if I, I didn't know the meeting was tonight for this, so I had it as a three-year version and a one-year version, so I didn't know which one to send. So I'll shoot that out tomorrow and see if we know what we're doing.
Perfect. Mr. Delacore?
I support the current proposal of an annual agreement at the same rate of 35,000. I cannot stress enough how much I personally value what Celine Main Street brings to our community in terms of making it such a great place to live and helping the growth of the business community in the downtown area. I'm mournful that we're not in a position, unfortunately, to help Celine Main Street increase their budget with the addition of the 109 Cultural Exchange and the assistance that Holly does need and does deserve, much-needed support. She's a tour de force down there, and I share the concerns of my colleagues that we don't want anyone to burn out, and we want to be able to deliver support where it needed. So hopefully, a year will give us enough time to reevaluate.
Thank you. And Mr. CEO?
Yes, I agree with one-year term. Not only do I echo what all my other colleagues say, but Jill, we value your contributions as well. I see your face everywhere whenever there's a project downtown and recognize it back the year, one of the moving forces there. So thank you, too, for your hard work.
Oh, thanks.
And I think with that, we have a direction for you, Mr. Campo, a one-year contract. Looking forward, I hope that the city may be able to provide some other additional assistance, even as we learn more about what bailout or incentive package to start flowing from the federal government, that we would be able to help out at that point, too. So thank you again for your input tonight, Jill. We'll see you later.
Good time.
With that, we will close our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn at 7:01 PM?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Kevin Sulaq? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Camaro Sulaq, and a second by Ms. Dillon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our work session is now closed.